No, I know that.
Good evening and welcome to Oregon Board of Education meeting of September seventeenth. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. The moment of silence this evening is for Bill Walters, who was a gym teacher at Eisenhower. Is there one that will first go?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best law of the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call please, Mrs. Spurs?
Certainly. Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Zawiski?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please?
Salute.
Second discussion. Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And I'd like to welcome some students from the teaching professional class tonight for today's meeting. Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
And public participation, do you have any cards, Mrs. Spurs?
I have nothing.
Please be advised that this meeting is being audioshaped and will be available on the district website. Presentation from Mrs. Coy.
I'm writing, I'm writing. Here's more than slide this way or should you?
Oh.
You don't have to.
I will.
Are you sliding, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Um, thank you.
There you go. So right over here.
When you?
Right next to you.
I do have a couple extras, so I'll leave it. I'm sorry you're here tonight. Okay. All right, ready to roll. All right. Well, I'm here tonight to talk about the state report card, which really we have excellent news to record. As you can see from the opening slide, our district was a four-star district and our Career Tech program was a five-star district. So in both areas, we are exceeding state standards. So we should feel very good about the work that we continue to do with kids on a daily basis because we wouldn't be able to achieve these levels without all the work that everybody does. But with that being said, the report card is just one measure. It certainly does not define us and it doesn't tell our whole story. Certainly as you come to different board meetings and you see and hear all the things that the kids are doing and all the wonderful things that our district does, this is just one facet of Oregon City Schools. So the district report card, we're going to start with our academic report card. And there are six ratings or there are six areas in which we have measures for, only five of the six we actually get a rating for. So we're going to start with the first three right here. So achievement, that looks at the academic performance of every student. So every test they take, every level or every score is put into the achievement component. There's progress, which we receive four stars for. Progress is all about growth, value added. So taking a student from day one, day one of school and seeing how far we can grow them academically because we know not all students come in at the same achievement level. So we hope to grow them at least one year in the timeframe in which we have them. Gap closing, this looks at a variety of subgroups, plus there's a lot of other stuff thrown in that one. When we get to that component, you'll see all the extra things that are in the gap closing component. Some of them, like I said, achievement progress, those are pretty easy to understand and then they start to get more and more complicated with more and more factors. So gap closing is one of those. Now, for achievement progress, we were steady. We were four stars last year, four stars this year. And actually, the star system, the first time for the star system was last year. Previous to that, we actually used letter grades, A through F. But gap closing is where we actually lost some ground this year. We previously were five in the area of gap closing. So when we get to that component, we'll talk about some of those areas that did change from two years ago to last year. There are three additional components, but only two of the three are reported. So graduation, it's pretty simple. We look at a four-year graduation rate and a five-year graduation rate. Early literacy is the fifth component. And this looks at our students in kindergarten through third grade in the area of reading. There are three different components there that we look at. And then the last one is college career workforce and military readiness. Obviously, I could not fit all of that on my little, on my little circle there. But this component looks at how well students are prepared for future opportunities. It is not currently rated. I haven't seen anything in regards to when it will be rated. There was some talk that it was going to be this year. I don't know if they're going to just leave that off and just be something that is reported or if it will eventually become the sixth component. Not all of the components are weighted equally. So achievement and progress are the most heavily weighted at twenty-eight and six tenths percent. Then we have graduation rate, gap closing, and early literacy. And again, the college career workforce and military readiness, if that's a report only, that's why it doesn't show here on the chart. So we'll start with achievement. The achievement component has changed over time. It used to look at the percentage of students who earned a proficient score as well as what we call the performance index. Achievement now is only based on the performance index. And essentially, we get points for every test that a student takes regardless of their achievement level. So all achievement levels are included. That goes from basic all the way up to the advanced plus for some of our accelerated students. We earn points for every achievement level. So the higher you achieve, the more points we receive. So this is a screenshot of every test that was taken in Oregon City Schools last year in the spring and what percentage of students earn the various achievement levels. So you can see that the heaviest concentration of students is in the proficient category at twenty-seven point two percent. Or I'm sorry, at twenty, oh yeah, twenty-seven point two percent because you get one point for every proficient score. And then you can look on either side of that. You can see in the basic and limited areas, the drop is larger. You're going to learn, lose more points if they score below proficient and then you're going to earn more points if they score above proficient. So over the last few years, our conversations have really focused around moving students out of proficient into the accomplished and advanced areas and also moving students out of the limited and basic categories into that proficient category. So spending less time talking about the percent proficient because that can be a bit misleading, but also looking at the entire scope and ensuring that we are, that we are taking care of all of our learners. From the students who need the most support all the way up to our students who really are achieving at high levels. We want to ensure that they're growing as we would expect them to. So some achievement highlights, these are just some areas that were up from the previous year. Fourth grade at Jerusalem, ELA up thirteen percent, fifth grade ELA as a whole up eight percent, fifth grade science up six percent, seventh grade math up ten percent, Algebra I, which Algebra I is always a tricky component because we have our students at Bassett who take the Algebra I test and then we have our students at Clay that take the Algebra I test. And I look at them separately and I'm always so impressed with Clay's scores because we're taking those high achieving students, they're at, they're at Bassett. Those highest achieving students are taking the Algebra I test there and our Algebra I teachers continue to put up phenomenal scores in those areas with our students. So I, I'm always so impressed and I think on one of their last TBTs that they had looking at test scores, they were like, you know, like we rock. Like they were super, super proud of the work that they were doing. So that's, that's fantastic. Biology was up nine percent and American history was up seven percent. So just a couple of highlights there to take a look at. All right, that progress, it's hard to fit green, it's a little hard to read. So the progress component, you might, you may hear it called growth, you may hear it called value added. It basically looks at performance over time. I have been a huge fan of the progress component or the value added component because it takes into account where a student starts and then predicts where they think that student will score at the end of the year. But what's fantastic is those kids are compared to the kids that look just like them across the state. So it's an even playing field. We're not taking a student who scored at the basic level and expecting them to score, to score advanced or accelerated. So it takes those cohorts of kids and really looks at are we truly growing? Are we positively impacting every single student that we have in our district? And over time, our progress component has been very, very positive. That's really kind of been our shining star. As our achievement levels have come up, in previous years, that has maybe been an area that we've been working on. But again, progress has always been a really strong area for us. So just a couple of highlights in terms of progress. These are some areas that, that either saw expected growth or above expected growth. So language arts, four through eight, ELA, expected growth. Our high school ELA was expected growth in math. We had above expected growth in four through eight math and algebra. Geometry was expected growth. And then science, four through eight science significantly above expected growth. So that's the highest category. Biology was significantly above, social studies, above expected growth, and then American government significantly above. So again, you can see that this is definitely an area where we excel in taking those students where they start and growing them in the time that we have them here at school. Okay, on to gap closing. So the first few measures are pretty, are pretty straightforward. Gap closing, I feel like they just threw a whole bunch of stuff into this one category. So gap closing in the past was really all about subgroups of kids. So looking at the different, like socioeconomic status, different racial or ethnic backgrounds, that's really what gap closing was about. Now, we've added in English language learners, looking at their language proficiency, chronic absenteeism, that now can earn points, and then identifying gifted students and providing gifted services. So this component is pretty involved and it takes quite a bit of time to kind of figure out where your points are, how many points you've earned, and then where your areas of opportunity lie. So we have these different areas. And for graduation, we could have earned five points. For ELA math achievement, sixteen points. ELA math progress, twelve points. Our gifted indicator, fifteen points. Absenteeism, five points possible, and then our English language learners, five points as well. And I have to, have to say that that population is growing exponentially and that's not unique to us. We have other districts in the area that are also talking about the number of English language learners that they have coming to their schools and utilizing their resources. So that's an area that I probably anticipate having some additional students as being part of that indicator. So these are the various subgroups. The ones that are in bold are the ones that we have fifteen students that are a part of. So we have subgroups, all students Hispanic, white, that should be white, not while, I see a mistake there, black, non-Hispanic, multiracial, English learner, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. So this looks a little bit like Christmas. So we've got some green and some red here. But for gap closing, our percentage was forty-three and one tenth percent, which we earned twenty-five points out of the fifty-eight possible. So the areas that are, that I left black were areas that we had performed in the same way the previous year. But anything that I made red, those were areas where we earned less points this year than we had in the past. So chronic absenteeism, of the five points possible, we didn't earn any of them because we didn't meet the goals. There are three different ways that you can earn that, earn those points and we didn't hit any of them. English language proficiency improvement indicator, we didn't earn any of those points. And then the progress, which you might, you go, wait a minute, didn't she just say progress is the shining star for us? And typically, we do, you know, that is again, an area that we always feel very good about. But when we're talking about the different subgroups, we're going to have to look a little bit more closely and identify which subgroups that were having difficulty growing. So that will be something we'll have to take a look at. Okay, graduation, that's a pretty straightforward component. We look at a four-year average and a five-year average and those are weighted. So our graduation percentage was ninety-four point one because our four-year graduation rate was ninety-three and four tenths. And then that is sixty percent of the component. And then the five-year graduation rate was ninety-five and two tenths, which is forty percent of the component. So you add those together, that's ninety-four and one tenth percent, which then is, was our four-star rating in the area of graduation. So I know our high school works really, really, really hard to be sure that they're all graduating on time. Early literacy, this is an area that has three different components to it. So it looks at the percentage of students who pass the third grade ELA OST. It looks at the percentage of students who we promoted to third grade, or promoted to fourth grade from third grade. And then the K three, the improving K three literacy measure looks at multiple years of data. Because students who are not reading, who are considered to be below benchmark during our September Acadience benchmarking timeframe, those students are placed on RIPS, which is a reading improvement monitoring plan. So that's for kindergarten through third grade. Now, the following here, the state wants to see that student no longer be on a RIPS plan any longer. So we earn points for the number of students that are, that no longer need that literacy support from year to year. So early, our early literacy percentage is seventy-three point nine. We had seventy and eight tenths students who were proficient in third grade, who passed the test with a proficient score. So that's forty percent of the measure. Promotion to fourth grade, we had ninety-nine and one tenth percent of our students promoted to fourth grade. That's thirty-five percent of the measure. And then improving the K three literacy, we had forty-three and seven tenths percent of the, percent of the students who were on a RIPS the previous year and then were taken off of the RIPS because they scored at a high enough level in which they didn't qualify for the RIPS any longer. So you add those three together and then that gives you your early literacy percentage, which was three stars. That was consistent with the previous year. These are the individual ratings for the schools. This is part of the handout there. You can see like the graduation rate, you know, you don't see many stars there because obviously that only applies to Clay. Early literacy is only going to apply to our elementary schools. But for the most part, our schools remain steady. We had, you know, again, we might have lost a half star here or there because you can get a half star for the overall rating. That doesn't happen with the components, but it does for the individual schools. So again, we're pretty consistent, so we feel good about that work. There's always areas of opportunity that we saw within, within the data that we'll be working through. Can't forget to talk about our Career Tech program, which I really wish Becky was here because this is not my wheelhouse. I've definitely done some studying. She has some, there's some measures here at one, a couple, very straightforward, achievement, graduation. You're like, oh, we heard that with the district report card. Yes, those two work similarly, not exactly the same, but pretty, but pretty close. But that career and post-secondary and the post-program outcomes, wow, there's lots of stuff that goes into that. And I didn't say it earlier, but I want to be sure that I say it now. The, the importance of our EMIS coordinator, the importance of Nate Quigg is absolutely unbelievable. Because if he doesn't get this stuff right, it doesn't then report accurately. So I know Becky and Nate work very, very closely together to ensure that this data is accurate. But the amount of input is just off the charts, absolutely off the charts. But as you can see, five stars across the board. This is, you know, put on repeat for our Career Tech program because this has been a trend for them over the last few years. So four components, they're all weighted equally. So a little bit different than the district report card in that way, all twenty-five percent. So they have an achievement measure, but instead of just performance index, and actually, performance index is a very small percentage of the achievement component for Career Tech. The technical skills attainment measure, that's actually eighty percent of their overall achievement component and that's like their web exams that they take. So that's a huge portion of their achievement component. And they, their, their overall achievement in that area was ninety-five and three tenths. So again, absolutely fantastic. We then look at their performance index. That, this works just like it did for the district and that was at seventy point two percent. And that's only twenty percent of the measure. Graduation, so again, there's a four-year graduation rate and a five-year graduation rate, but obviously, this is exclusive to students in the Career Tech program. The four-year graduation rate was ninety-eight and two tenths and the five-year graduation rate was ninety-eight and eight tenths. Now these get more complicated. And again, I'm going through and going, did I get everything? I don't know how everybody keeps it straight. So the career and post-secondary readiness. So this really looks at how, while we're preparing students for different pathways of education and career. So you can earn points if you do different things. So there is the readiness category, that's, and there's the readiness measure option one. So you get a point if any of these things happen. Remediation free ACT or SAT score, receive an honors diploma, twelve or more industry credential points in a single career for your field, or you're considered military ready. You can then earn three tenths of an additional point if you complete one of the work-based service learning categories. Internships, pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships, other work-based learning, and Ohio means jobs readiness deal. The maximum number of points a student can contribute is, is one and thirty-three hundredths or one and three tenths. So again, think about all of the data collection and all the data entry that goes into just, just this part of this measure to ensure that it is accurate. Now, there's a second part to this one. This, then you have the Career Tech and Advanced Coursework category. So a whole nother category to the same component and this is considered measure or option number two. So you can earn again, thirty-three hundredths of a point if you do any of these things. So they're listed there. Some of them are similar to the ones that I've, we've already highlighted, but then there are some additional components that are there as well. Again, the maximum is one and, one and thirty-three hundredths of a point. And then once each student's waiting is determined, all of that is totaled and then that gives you the percentage. So again, it's lots of moving pieces and parts that go into just this one component. So kudos again to Nate and Becky for ensuring that it is accurate and earning that five-star rating. Because we definitely want our kids to get the credit that they've earned. They've done these things. So we want to be sure it reflects in our report card. The last outcome or the last component is the post-program outcome. So this looks at the proportion of students who are employed in an apprenticeship, join the military at our service program, or enrolled in post-secondary education or some sort of advanced training six months after leaving high school. So they're contacting these students and asking them, hey, what, what are you up to? So ninety-seven percent of our students were enrolled or in one of those outcomes, one of those components that are listed there. Industry credential measures the proportion of students earning industry credentials before they leave high school or in the first six months. So we have eighty-nine and two tenths of our students earning some sort of industry recognized credential. And then fifty-two and one tenth earning at least twelve points in a single. credential, and then 52 and one tenth earning at least 12 points in a single credential or in a bundle of credentials in a single career pathway. Again, I'm sure Becky could talk more about all of that, but as you can see, a lot of tracking and a lot of great things going on for our kids because they can take these things and be ready for the workforce, be ready for their next educational opportunity, whatever lies ahead, they're going to be ready for. Questions? It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff to take in.
I would just like to say, Shannon, for your leadership and all of our principals and all of our teachers and our families who are working with the kids, thank you. This is the second consecutive year Oregon has been a four-star district overall and five for Career Tech. And if you look at where Facet was, for example, where they were two years ago and where they are now, it's just amazing. And so we've got a lot of opportunities, but we're making a lot of headway, and I think we deserve an awful lot of credit for your leadership and helping to elevate our performance on our shoulders. Thank you.
Great job. Every year you do this, I learn more. You do it in such a nice, hopefully that was interesting because that stuff that, no matter how long you're in the profession, gets confusing because they do change it often at the state level, and Jen's really good at making it simple for us to understand. And I also want to thank her and everybody, our whole team. Most of our leaders are here tonight, our principals, and you know, this is a big moment every year. It's not the moment, but it is a big moment, and we talk about that, and you said it well. It's one measure, but it does feel good when that measure shows positive rewards for all the hard efforts that these kids put in. So thank you, Jen, very much.
Good to move forward if you're ready.
We have a proclamation this evening. Whereas Hal Gregory has dedicated 21 years of exemplary service to the Oregon City Schools, advancing from the role of Special Services Director to Assistant Superintendent, and ultimately to Superintendent. Whereas Hal Gregory's professional journey began with a Bachelor of Education in the University of Toledo in 1989, and was further enriched by a Master of Arts in the Education Administration from California State University, San Bernardino, reflecting his commitment to educational excellence and leadership. Whereas Hal Gregory's teaching career initially took root in Ohio, and he later expanded his impact in California before heeding the call to return to Ohio, where he has profoundly influenced the Oregon City Schools community. Whereas under Hal Gregory's visionary leadership, the district has flourished, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to student achievement, educational innovation, and community engagement. Whereas Hal Gregory has exemplified unwavering dedication, compassion, and integrity, earning the respect and admiration of students, parents, staff, and the broader community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Oregon City Schools Board of Education, do hereby express our profound gratitude and appreciation to Hal Gregory for his remarkable contributions and tireless service over the past 21 years. Be it further proclaimed that we extend our heartfelt best wishes to Hal Gregory as he embarks on new endeavors, confident that his legacy of leadership and dedication will continue to inspire and benefit the field of education. In witness thereof, we adhere to set our hands and cause the seal of the Oregon City Schools to be affixed on the 17th day of September 2024. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very, very much. Carol, and to all of you, you know, very thankful for the years I've had and all the friendships that I have with many of these people in the audience and around the district. At the end of the day, that's what it's all about, are the people you work with, the people you get to know, and those are the memories that you have. So was not expecting this, Carol, thank you. I've been working with you as the president of the board for as long as I've been superintendent, so I appreciate your leadership and all the support, you know, forever, since we've known each other. And Mike, you've been on the board as long as I've been in the district just about as well, so thank you for all those things. We've had a lot of bumps and bruises. And Jeff, you've been there even longer, you know, getting us through a lot. I mean, you've been part of all the hardest of decisions to make, so I want to appreciate and thank you for helping and getting me through all these. And you know, Jane, you're kind of new still, but I appreciate your leadership with this transition because it's been a lot to allow the transition to happen, you know, the way it is happening right now, you know, with Dr. Fritz being here and all that. You know, I've worked with Jane, thank you so much for all the years that you've taught me, you know, what it means, you know, to understand the whole funding of education, which is another thing that is so hard to understand as we go through it. So again, I can't thank you enough and for all the stuff you've given my family. You've given my family their life, you know? You've given everything to us, so thank you so much, Carol, for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, we appreciate you. Okay, treasures report, this is Frus.
Okay, I'd just like to thank you for not having the same sappy music Hal had. It's opening day, so we'll all be crying. I'm sorry, that was sappy music. Okay. Treasures report. I just want to make sure everybody understands the transfers that are part of my motion. We have $194,000 coming from General Fund going into the PI Fund. It's another key reimbursement that we received back from '21-'22. That's our, we put it back into the General Fund, I'm sorry. It's posted General Fund, it goes into PI to help support that fund. Since it is one-time money, we may only not get every year. So far, we've gotten it, but you just never know. It's the annual, it's the fall, transfer of the student activity fees from General Fund into the Clay and Facet Athletic Funds, you know, for the student fees that pay to participate so that they can use those monies to support the athletics. The final one is a little different, it's because we, as part of the ag construction project, there was architectural services that had actually been posted to PI as it was in, I think even before, when we were planning for the grant, and so we are asking that money be moved into the grant so it could get paid out of the grant. So it was before we'd gotten the money probably, but it is definitely part of that project and we'd like to have that allocated. So those were the transfers, I don't usually have quite that many. Then moving on to the actual report, this is the month that we do the permanent appropriation measure. I just wanted you all to see what the breakdown is. We have a 68-point, roughly $68.7 million budget for this year. You can see 79% of it is the General Fund, that's the biggest bulk. And then you can see the various breakdowns, and the detail is attached behind. As per usual, there can be adjustments throughout the year. Typically, it's with the grants, they come and go as to, you know, we get more money or they pass more forward to us. So that is the proposed permanent appropriation measure. It hasn't changed much, but it is an official now. The true cash review, which is next to you. We will be updating the final forecast at the November board meeting, and I think, actually, Dr. Fritz mentioned that he heard in the blade that we're expecting a 29.5% increase in our real valuations. So I just did, now I have not received anything from Lucas County Auditor's office. I, of course, asked and they didn't, you know, give me anything, so I'm waiting for the final numbers and the final approval, but pending, based on a calculation, our receipts would come up for calendar year '25, which would be half this year, half next year, of a million eighty. Now, to be safe, I'd probably plan on a million just because, you know, we do have people who, we do have some pushback on the valuation increases. The only additional monies we receive are on inside mills. We have six inside mills, and if this is what I get from the county auditor, I will in fact update the final forecast accordingly to this future year. I just want to remind everyone, the only increase of monies that the district will ever receive on increase in valuations is on this six inside mills. Otherwise, the taxable millage will be rolled back to offset the increase in the valuation so that we do not collect more than the taxpayers voted on. So it's just important to remember that. I know people will, it's interesting, within a neighborhood, someone could have a 35% increase, the person next door can have a 29%, some people will have a reduction. It's a science, but it's not an easy science. So just so you're aware, but we do only receive an increase on inside mills, otherwise it's rolled back. I passed out the true cash definitions, I just want to highlight a couple items. I was kind of quirky. One thing with the foundation restricted grants and aides, I want you to be reminded that those will be adjusted to actual enrollment in the second payment in October. We get two payments from the Fair School Funding a month, and they will be adjusted to potentially our actual for the year, the second payment of October. We're still running off estimates. Kind of a quirk this month, and I don't remember this happening, so I'll just enjoy it. Revenue and expenditures were changed by the same percentage, this will never happen again, so I'm just pointing it out, it's fairly meaningless, but it kind of cracked me up. And then I did go to a financial update, and I just want to give you some highlights because it was a very good one. And Aaron Rausch, who I'm sure you've heard of, he's the financial, he has a big title with the Department of Educational Workforce, and he was just going through, you know, the first question is, hey, you know, does the state have money, you know, what's going on? And state income collections are down significantly. I think he said over $900 million compared to estimates. Interest income from the investments is up because obviously we've had good interest rates that will change, but that is significant for the upcoming budget. They'll be starting to work on the budget hopefully, so they have it hopefully for us by next July, we'll see. Something to consider is that the large valuation increases that we'll be receiving, potentially 29.5%, is an offset within the Fair School Funding formula that will reduce what we receive. So just another thought, doesn't mean it's bad, it's just something to consider. There is a concern, and it was specifically asked, are they going to, is the legislature going to allow the Fair School Funding formula to be funded? And he was very, you know, skittish. I hope, at the very minimum, they need to increase the base cost percentages, and it would be very nice in the future if they did it annually. I mean, I think that is something, even if they don't fulfill the commitment for the formula, and I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, I just, we just don't know what they're going to do. If they could at least give the base cost increases every year, that would help schools. And someone asked about the marijuana revenue, and I just, it was interesting. They haven't been allocated yet, and they think, he believed it would probably go to Health and Human Services rather than Education. It's not decided yet, but I kind of had read something like that myself, but I just wanted you aware, doesn't mean that's what's going to happen because it has not been voted on yet. I'll highlight it for the board, another thing that came up is all of us on the board and every employee in the district needs to have, I think it's a, what, five-minute in-service on fraud, and it's been updated. We have it through Public School Works. So I was hoping, because you guys don't typically get access to Public School Works, if we could just maybe, if we had one of our special meetings or the beginning of the next one, we'll have to take five minutes to watch it. I promise, it's five minutes, it's probably like chewing straw, but it is important to keep this in a forefront because it is public money and we have to be aware that people do steal money. I have some deadlines on there, but unless there are questions, that's my report tonight.
Hey, may I, maybe we have a motion to accept the treasures report, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Questions? Remind, we'll do that in our next work session.
That's kind of, yeah, sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Savit?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Anyone have a need for an executive session?
Hey Carol, real quick, real quick, before we move on, I feel, I wanted to say something about Dan, and my eyes went right past him, and I do apologize, but, well, and I know Dan doesn't care, I know that, but I want to acknowledge Dan because Dan, he brought me onto the board, as several of you did, and that meant a lot because you, you know, you were kind of new at that point, and you had faith in me when we first, you know, into the super tenancy. You were a mentor for communication for me because that's been your life. You know, you have helped behind the scenes solve so many different problems, connections, people, it's a skill you have that is second to none, and I mean that sincerely, I mean, you have helped so many different issues, and I do want to sincerely thank you for everything you've done because, you know, if we don't function as a team, if we don't have people that will help, you know, offset our weaknesses, then we're nothing. So Dan, sorry, it wasn't the first time, but I sincerely, sincerely want to thank you for all the years that you've supported me, so thank you. Yep, thank you.
Did we do the roll call, Jane?
Yes, you did.
Sorry.
No worries.
I don't, did I?
Yeah, well, I put yeses, so I believe you did, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, are there any items that board, members of the board wish to pull for the regular meeting consent agenda? During that, we need a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savit?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes, and I understand you have something.
Yeah, just to acknowledge a few things, you know, first of all, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank Dr. Fritz for recommending three of our outstanding leaders, and Jim, and Amy, and Joey. You know, Jim's been with us a long time, Amy's been with us a long time, and Joe's been with us now long enough that we know how well he's doing, so, you know, just thank you to the board and to Jim for making the recommendation to those leaders. I know it's a big peace of mind to know that you have support from the board moving forward as leader of the district, so congratulations obviously to those three folks. And I just want to acknowledge, you know, because I'm not going to be here to do it, to Dean. Dean, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done for me and the district. I know you're stepping down here at the end of the school year, but Dean came in right after me, you know, Dean and I graduated together from high school, and then we found ourselves reconnected here 20 years ago, and Dean came in as Career Tech Director, and then kind of, you know, moved around and came over as the Director of Business Affairs, I think might have been the title at the time, and then moved into the Assistant Soup when I transitioned to this, and really just helped me so much, and it was just the two of us for a long time, you know, I mean, we were down a man internally at the central office, and Dean helped pick up the slack on things I certainly didn't understand, and just how he has really run the whole classified side of the district, you know, and on his own with my support, but really on his own, and Dean's going to be tremendously missed at the end of this year, and big shoes to fill. So Dean, thank you for everything. You know, I wish you and Dean the best, of course, you know that, and I'm sure we'll see each other beyond here, but I just want to, you know, let you know how much these last 20 years have meant, and specifically the last nine, working together, you as Assistant and Soup. So thank you for everything, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to be able to say that to you.
Okay, on to new business, we have transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into these transportation contracts for the 24-25 school year. The Floyd family to St. Ursula, the Sutman family to Toledo School for the Arts, Pastor family to Toledo School of the Arts, Tucker family to Central Catholic, the Schmidt-Hayes family to the Toledo School for the Arts, and the Duvendek family to St. the Schmidt Hayes family to the Toledo School for the Arts, and the Duvendek family to St. Ursula Academy. May I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes. We need a motion to approve the following resolution authorizing the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and receive school bus bids on our BTF, whereas the Oregon City Schools Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of three seventy-two passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies. Therefore, be it resolved, the Oregon City Schools Board of Education wishes to participate and authorizes the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and receive bids on behalf of said board as per specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of three seventy-two passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? We do try to purchase buses every year to keep the fleet up to date, so this is part of that. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Item C, we need a motion to approve the following overnight trip. The FFA going to National FFA Convention in Indianapolis on October twenty-second through the twenty-seventh. May I have a motion, please? I'll move. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Okay, for item D, we have donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. The Hail Performance Coatings donated a five-hundred-dollar gift card to Clay Advanced Manufacturing Machining. Gina and Jeffrey Chef donated an exercise bike for the Eisenhower Sensory Room with a value of two-hundred dollars. St. Vincent Surgery Department and Doctor and Mrs. Patel donated school supplies to Coy Elementary with a value of five-hundred dollars. Brian Givers donated a blessing trumpet to Eisenhower Band Program, valued two-hundred and fifty dollars. And Kathy Vermilier donated school supplies to Jerusalem Title One Classroom, valued a hundred and fifty dollars. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second, our gratitude.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes. And we move to the superintendent's report? Mr. Associate?
I'm going to turn it over to Hal first.
Well, a lot of what I was going to say, I just said. So, um, you know, I was going to, I was going to acknowledge everybody, and Jim's got a couple things he's going to share, but, you know, just in terms of the start of the year, you know, I, I want to reiterate the fact that you allowed us to be together again. I mean, I know I've said that multiple times, but I think it's paying huge dividends in terms of what we've been able to, to connect with and brainstorm about, and, and share, obviously, and meet people and all those types of things. So it's been a very, very good transition. So you made the right decision, you did a great job, and, and it's going to, the district's going to be in great hands. You know, I'm just going to say this about the start of the school year. We had a great internal start of the school year, but externally, it feels like, I think, the community may feel like we haven't had a great start to the school year because of things that are said and misconstrued, and, you know, all that stuff that happens in social media like every day, right? And we've been blessed, we're, you know, we've had pockets of that type of thing, but we haven't had a ton, I mean, I guess, regular and ongoing, but it feels like the start of this year's kind of had a little bit of that. And I just want to reassure our public that most of the stuff that is said, or emphasized, or spewed on social media, specifically Facebook, is not accurate. And we know that internally, because we talk and we're allowed to talk, but we can't share information. And I just want to be real upfront and honest. We can't share what happens. We can't talk about kids. We can't talk about situations. We can't share that stuff. So in the absence of information, what happens, right? We all know what happens. False information gets out there, or opinions get out there, and so forth. And I guess it bothers me, because I know that's not the truth, and I know that's not who we are as a school district, and it bothers me when the community latches on to a particular thing and then blows it way out of proportion. And so I guess I just want to make that point, that we are doing a great job in Oregon City Schools. Our leaders, yes, they are dealing with things, just like every other here, just like every other principal at every school in America. Things happen that are out of our control now that we have to, uh, uh, deal with. But we have the infrastructure, you have provided us with the support. We are one of the safest and best-trained and best-protected districts anywhere in the United States, I would say, with SRO programs and the trainings we have, and the leaders that we have. So, uh, we're not a district that needs to be in lockdown, we're not a district that needs to do anything different than what we're already doing, but there's, you know, there's always stuff we can get better at. But I just wanted to, I guess, let people know that we deal with everything, we don't hide it, and we don't lie. And, and, and that's some of the accusations that I get, you know, made aware of on Facebook that are just absolutely not true. So it's a little bit of a tyrant rant there, but it's to defend who we all are as a district and who we are as a board, because I, I don't want anyone to feel that we're something other than what we are. So, with that being said, Dr. Fritz?
Thank you. I'm going to talk really loud, use my teacher voice today. Jane has stolen the microphone in front of me. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Hey, do you want to switch things right now?
No.
Like say I'm obviously or something?
Yeah. I, I'll echo what Hal has said. First, to the board, thank you for allowing me to have a transition with Hal, with this administration, with the staff in this district, because, and with all you as well. Because it's allowed me to learn a lot about workflow, which is important in my job, learn a lot about people, get to meet people, internally, externally. It's been very valuable in, in this transition, so I do appreciate that. Thank you as a board for allowing us to do this. I'll also echo the fact that the, you know, the scores that Jennifer talked about tonight, the local poor card, you know, it's one component of our success, and it's, you know, those results are very good. Yes, there's room for improvement, and we'll work towards that, but they're very good. We should celebrate that, because it goes, it's a lot of hard work of the administration, the staff, and everybody in this district to help our students be successful each and every day. And we have to celebrate that. But I also want to talk about the fact that the school year has started off internally very well. You know, from clean buildings, food prepared, kids getting here on time on buses, and back home on buses safely. You know, the administrators working with our staff to make sure that as kids come in, they're welcome, they feel positive energy in the buildings. I've seen it, I've been walking through the buildings, talking with staff, talking with students. It, it's, it's very refreshing to see, especially in light of what Hal just mentioned, and some of the challenges that we've been faced with at the beginning of the year. We'll overcome that, and we'll continue to do what's best. We'll continue to focus on the positive things that are happening each and every day, you know, with three, two-hundred students, and I'll talk a little bit about enrollment here in a second. But we've got to focus on that, and, and the number of positive things that are going to happen each and every day with our students, and we'll continue to do that. I'm just going to talk briefly about enrollment. What you'll get to know about me is that in September of each year, I will give you an enrollment report that will share with you the overall enrollment, give you some trend data that we're seeing briefly, and then also talk about historical data. If you really want to have a, a hard discussion about enrollment, stop by, we'll talk. You know, there's lots and lots of data out there. But overall, you know, enrollment right now is thirty-two, thirty-two-hundred-and-ninety-two students. When we look at our lowest enrollment is in kindergarten and in seventh grade. It's actually exactly the same right now, two-twenty-four. Our highest enrollment is in tenth grade at two-ninety-three. Average class sizes are two-fifty-three overall, K through twelve. When you look at the five-through-twelve enrollment, we're at two-fifty-eight. And K-through-four enrollment's at two-forty-seven. I point that out because you start, you start to see some trends, right? Our upper grades are a little bit higher, our lower grades are a little bit lower. And as that continues to work through the system, we're going to see, we would expect to see lower enrollment numbers overall, as we've seen, you know, happening over the last fifteen, twenty years in this district. Dan can tell you, because he serves on a committee where some of this discussion is happening. We're seeing this community age. As somebody who's aging, I can appreciate that and understand that. But, you know, we're not seeing a lot of the younger folks coming into the, into this community and bringing students with them. I think Jerry, we were talking about hous, housing prices. You know, one of the things that we're seeing across Lucas County, across Northwest Ohio, is, and you talk to builders, I had a conversation over the weekend with two builders, and they said, you know, you can't build a house anymore, even a small one, maybe, you know, twelve-hundred to fourteen hundred square feet for anything less than three-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, because they just can't make a profit on it. And so, the question becomes, is who can afford that? And those are typically not, you know, the brand-new families with children. You know, so, those are things that, you know, we're going to have to think about as we continue on and move forward in the district. I also included in, you know, this historical data, and you can go through that and see that the trends within each building. There is an interesting pattern from kindergarten through ninth grade, where, like kindergarten, I said, is two-twenty-four. Well, first grade is around two-fifty, two-sixty. And it keeps doing this, up and down into those numbers from kindergarten through ninth grade. I've never seen anything like it. And I can't explain it, but it's, you know, it's not too much of a difference, but it is, you know, thirty or forty students to be done a year. So, that, that causes a little bit of an issue as we transition from building to building to building, because then we have to plan for that extra class in those, that one grade level, especially as we look at K through six. So that, you know, that presents a little bit of challenge as we, as we transition those kids through and, and look at that. So, feel free to look that over if you have any questions, feel free to let me know, but we weren't happy to address those with you. And then on the back of that page, you'll also see, which, this is in your back, and I thought you were going to mention that, you can see the last ten years' worth of enrollment in each of the buildings, and overall as well. Any questions on that?
Good, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Okay, we take the whole business, we have those policies, the following policies were presented for their first reading in August, and are now being recommended for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Board discussion for our members only, and I promise those people, they could be out of here in an hour, and we're not going to quite meet, and I apologize. We may be ten minutes over. Board discussion. Mr. Jerry Eversman, would you give us a recap?
Thank you. Yes. I would like to acknowledge and speak to this past Friday evening's salute to veterans night and the Clay football game. It was Mr. Kuhlzdal, the band director, who had contacted me, knowing that I've worked with our veterans community about a potential flyover for the game, and he told me of the salute to veterans, and what the halftime show that they wanted to perform. And that's all it took, I was all in. And, and to that extent, I met with Mr. Kiss, and Mr. Kiss had a yes-I-can attitude. And he totally embraced the idea. He did, I, I know, in reporting back to me, he spoke with the principal, Mr. Jurzki, and I can't say enough about the, the assistance, the cooperation. I'll even add Mr. Zigray, the maintenance director for the school district. From the administration down to the, to the gate workers, to the custodians that were on duty, everybody was yes-I-can, we can do this. And we were able to bring in a lot more veterans to come out here. We wanted to get people familiar with what we do at Clay High School. And it was the energy, I think, the, the students, red, white, and blue. Some of you that may have dressed in red, white, and blue, the veterans took notice of that. They took notice, they told me, the flags, the branches of military flags being brought in by the football team. My phone blew up the next day with how great this was, that Clay High School did this. It wasn't me, it, I, I, my first thing come from the band director, first inclination. But the administration, you know, everybody must have been on board, because it filtered down to the principal and the athletic director, and we made it happen. And I'm just very proud of, of this district, I'm proud of the football team, because they delivered a big win that night. I, I'm told that we hadn't beat Finley in, in like thirty-six years, according to Bruce Johnson's calculations.
Twenty-eight.
Was it twenty-eight?
It was nineteen ninety-six, I was born in ninety-six, so it's not getting to the thirties.
Okay. My math was not, my recollection, but you're right on that, nineteen ninety-six. But Joe, Bruce Johnson, a good class of eighty-three graduate, had told me that. He's announcing the game this week at Ariesburg, so, everybody. It was just a great night, the veterans enjoyed it, they enjoyed being, it, it meant a lot to be recognized, to allow them to go out on the field and stand behind the color guard and, and present honors during the playing of the national anthem. And, and really, did you hear the crowd when ninety-seven-year-old World War II veteran and Korea veteran, he was a double-war veteran, Cruz, how do I pronounce his last name, Carol?
Beth Quest.
And she taught some of his children. And, and he throws the first pass of the game, like baseball, they have the first pitch, but he throws the first pass to his grandson, Tommy Frye, on the football team. What a moment. We had great video by another Clay alumni, Shirley Norton. We posted that up on social media, so everybody can see it. Just, thank you, everybody. Thank you, administrators, for empowering those people to do a great job, and, and everybody. So, we all share in, in this.
Jerry, thank you for, for, you know, all your hard work to behind the scenes. I, I was really hands-off on it, just hearing, you know, how it was developing along the way, but when you actually were there and saw it, you know, I didn't live it like you. You were down amongst all the folks and living it, you know. I was running around, but I wasn't living it, so you had to experience all those comments, and, but just seeing all those folks in their uniforms, you know, that maybe hadn't put it on in a while.
Oh, and I didn't say the active-duty military.
Yeah.
They supported this, our mission, if we can use military vernacular, yeah.
Yeah, no, there was a lot of folks. How many, how many veterans did you, would you say we had?
Uh, well, you, you'll never know, because there's a lot of them that come in that already are season ticket holders.
Okay.
With the senior pass, and, and they're already got tickets. But the ones that approached us, I would, I think my calculations, that we gave out some free tickets. We might have been in the seventies, eighties.
Awesome.
Something like that, Joe and I will reconcile that.
Yeah.
And, and the Vietnam veterans were on board as a cosponsoring agency, and, and so we, we wanted to, we're going to have some funds going back to the athletic department for the tickets that we provided to, to veterans. And, yeah, and, boy, they've run in some nice vehicles. We have a couple World War II Jeeps, sound a little nice. Yep.
Well, thank you so much for, for doing that. And Joe, thank you for your help, and Jim, everybody that, that, that worked on that. That was a special night. Good job.
Mr. Dan, you got something?
Uh, this is Mr. Gregory's last board meeting, and, and just, just a couple thoughts. I, I hope the people in this community understand how fortunate we've had to have Mr. Gregory as our superintendent and, and in the system as long as he has. Firm believer that this is, and this is a business, they go through life cycles, and you need different kinds of leaders at different times in your, in your, your lifespan. And with Mr. Gregory, we had the right man at the right time. And I think that the results from, from everything, from our benefits for our students to improved academics and getting us through a very, very, very difficult COVID time period says an awful lot, and, and, and I- lot. And, and, and I think that we can all be very proud of what he has done on behalf of this community. And, um, we're just grateful that we were able to have you here for as long as we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, very much.
Okay. And I have the good news report for the district. Coy has an upcoming candy sale beginning of next month?
Nope, we're just finishing it.
Oh, you're just finishing it? Well, excuse me. I'm sorry. I thought it was next month. Star starts now.
I think star is next.
Year done in, star starts September 30th. They're next month. Their Star's Trunk or Tree is October 13th. The Jogathon had great weather and they came very close to fundraising goal. Did you make it, Mr. Schabro?
We don't know. We'll find out on Friday.
Okay.
Secret information.
Okay, secret. passage parents don't forget their seventh grader immunizations and their volley for the cure is coming. Eisenhower will have their matinee, uh, movie matinee Thursday. Clay won the Passadon Challenge. September 27th is homecoming. Be prepared for a packed house because it's also Alumni Band Night. And there are free prom dresses available through the council's office. Um, September is and has been attendance awareness month. Attendance along with the poverty rate are the highest indicators of success in school. Please make sure your children are coming. The Weekend Food Bag is available again this year with bags of food can be picked up in our schools by contacting our principals. That's in conjunction with the Islamic Center of Toledo Food Bank. Teacher in-service September 23rd. That means students get to stay home. Uh, Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through the 11th. So, there'll be programs and drills throughout the district. The Oregon Jerusalem Candy Crawl is October 20th. And lastly, be aware of the Simon Road construction.
Oh, that's going to be a-
Which will continue through October 23rd. Probably easiest to use the stadium road parking lot if you need to come. And then, of course, there's a closure of the Coy Road as well. And that's the good news report that I have. Does anybody else?
Do you remember that Passalong Challenge? Uh, was somebody want to talk to that and what that was?
No. Well, it was a challenge we do every year with Goodwill. You talk about the Goodwill challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim, Jim works with, uh, Goodwill and we do it always against Whitmer, typically, right?
Whoever goes up against us, we're undefeated. So, we'll be-
That's true.
So, yeah. Can't get anybody go up and try to find a large group. Whitmer, Anthony Wang, nobody stands a chance.
Wonderful.
Maybe that I filmed, did we watch?
Do you want to?
He always comes up and would fills that truck, so.
You know, it's in a good timing because it's after garage sales and people want to get rid of what they have left over. So, perfect timing.
Goodwill needs to up that from 500 to 1,000. Yeah? Doing good. You've won it how many years? 20 years in a row?
Okay. Any need for an executive session? All right. Next board meeting is October 15. I think that's what I have. And what about a work session, gentlemen? I have about two per second written down, but that doesn't mean we have to do it. We're almost done, guys.
Is it scheduled in Oregon Master Plan Materials Review Meeting at like 6:30?
So, you can't do the second?
Can we do the third possibly?
You guys pick it. I'll be there.
Mr. Zavisky, the third?
No, because I have to do one thing first for the next morning.
No?
What are you going to have to do? I don't need that.
Okay. Well, give me a date.
We do seven or eight? Seven? Want to do seven?
Seven, eight, December 3.
At 5:00?
Seven is- Five.
Five.
October the 7th at 5:00. Mr. Zavisky, is that okay?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Yeah, do you have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right. And Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman or Mr. Savick? I apologize. Mr. Savick, I'm sorry. I was looking. Um, Ever, Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Muller?